I would.
Alana, you're recording.
Okay.
Can I have my um certificates from um?
How many emails?
Send it to Alana, send it to me, I'll give it to Alana. Or give that to me, I've got it. Wow. But anyway.
I thought I saw them in here. But.
Okay, certain conditions, so you know, you might want to listen. Okay. Thanks, you saw me at some idea.
I'm coming into.
Want to take it? I'll put it, I'll just, I'll put it. Yeah, we're all signed in. So, let's see, go. I'm sending it to you. Yeah, let's get started.
I think we're ready to get started. Um, things for grants tonight, we'll just take care of some housekeeping issues and then we'll get moving quickly.
I have one set of minutes and three resolutions for board review and approval. First, I have minutes from March seventeenth, twenty twenty five meeting. Motion, a second, and a vote. Motion by Dan, second by Josh, next. Josh, all in favor?
Right.
Votes, staying. Motion's carried. I have a resolution for eight twelve Franklin Park Drive. This was approval of an area variance of ten feet for reduced landscape buffer. A motion, a second, and a vote. Motion by Dan. Second by Kelly. All in favor?
Okay.
Votes, staying, motions carried. Second resolution is for eight twenty Franklin Park Drive, the adjacent parcel. Same thing, approval of an area variance of ten feet for reduced landscape buffer.
Motion approved.
Motion by Dan to approve.
Second.
Second by Josh, all in favor? Votes, staying, motions carried. Less but not least, resolution for five eight four one Bridge Street, their life. Approval of one additional attached sign on a facade without street access. Motion by Dan. Second by Kelly, all in favor?
Okay.
Votes, staying, motions carried. Just deleted. Okay. First, we have the Thompson Road use variance table application. Get ready, start whatever you want, no need for a notice.
Yeah. Um, I won't go through, this is our third appearance, so I will, I'm prepared to answer any questions you have, but I won't go through any of the old materials.
Anything you want, just let me know.
Um, I think.
The most recent is the last one down. The one we submitted um first last week.
The um.
What am I looking for, share?
It's the, it's the last one in this grouping.
Appraisal?
Yeah, it's got the big, there you go.
Appraisal.
So that's the um, that's the part that's changed. At the end of the last meeting, the board asked that we uh, if we were willing to put in an appraisal. So we went to Colliers, signed by Don Fisher and one of their senior um appraisers. I'll take just a couple of minutes and walk you through the appraisal. The appraisal that was prepared by Colliers went through sales in the general area in terms of residential sales, looked at a lot of residential sales. They looked at residence, they looked at sales in the area in terms of commercial and office uses, looked at a lot of sales of that too. And they determined what the per square foot value is for each. It's about the same in the town to what, what you get per square foot, commercial and for residential. And then what they did is they looked at examples where you had a conversion of space from office to residential. They found a good comparable where there was a house that was partly used as a house and then the other part of the house was used as a dentist office. In order to sell it, because there's no appetite or market for that piece to be, you know, dual use in that way, they um looked at what the diminution in value was. Um, because the, the value of the house was reduced on the market by the issue of the square footage of the dentist office. Because we're a product, that, that's to residential use. They did their calculations, as appraisers do, as to what that reduced the value per square foot. And they came up in that particular sale where it's just part of the house, there's a thirty percent diminution in value. They took that data and they used it to extrapolate what the cost would be for that sort of conversion. And then for the subject property, the cost of that conversion is perhaps as much as three hundred thousand dollars, which is what we think. Um, you know, the sale is for about three fifty. So that diminution in value is, would render the.
Cost of conversion for, for the, for a desk office.
In order, yeah, it was, they, they concluded uh that it could be as much as three hundred thousand dollars to convert the subject property to residential use. So the um, that would render it nearly valueless. And it's, they concluded that it supported the issuance of a use variance under those actions instances. So I'll stop there answering questions to the board I have.
Would your group be willing to actually conditions put on the variance? So for example, um, a piece maybe alignment sign, for example.
Yeah, we anticipated the potential conversation about signage. And um unlike some businesses in town that sort of seek architectural billboards, this is not that kind of business. This is a financial services business. They would like to have the ability to have a sign on the building, an attractive sign on the building, so that people, you know, from a directional point of view, know when they arrive in the right location. But they do not have a strong preference towards alignment sign, they would accept that condition.
What about the condition if they don't have tenants, if they'd be the only business in that building?
So I, I have some concern about the uh tenant issue only from a legality point of view. I would hate to consent to something that may have some challenge potentially. Um, just because um you can't uh generally speaking, from a planning point of view, you can't say that house can be rented and it can't be owned.
Regulating business activity, that's how you can't regulate business activity.
Yeah, you regulate use, right?
No, I agree.
Yeah, not contractual arrangements. So while my clients have no expectation that they'll be settling in any part of the building, just because of the nature of their business and the sensitivity of the of uh client data being there, it doesn't lend itself to that. My anxiety is the other direction, just the lawyer anxiety of considering something that is.
But it could, they could be professional use versus a grocery store or retail use, right?
Yes, yeah, you could certainly, we're not at all asking for a use variance on like all commercial uses, just office, professional office. But, but just the something, trying to, a condition that, that prevents leasing, that.
It's also relevant that the applicant has to go to the planning board after this is approved, that this will go to the planning board for site plan approval. And the planning board does look at all the aspects of the property, they look at parking, at signage, um et cetera.
Agreed.
So this is not the old review of it, then. Our planning board's good at making sure that it fits in with wherever, wherever it is in town.
Yes, we'll have to talk about signage when we get to that point with site plan because um it is in a residential zone, so I'm gonna have to look into that.
Okay, what is a monument sign, is that a sign that's like separate from the building?
Yeah.
That's right, that's right. All my clients plan on is having a, a sign that's on the building.
Okay.
Um, monument sign, so monument is an allusion to like a, like a grave stuff, right? Like a standalone sign, and we don't really have any plans that monument sign to. We wouldn't resist a condition of that.
Alana, can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
About, because this is residential and there's not gonna be code for square footage of signage, should, should this board look at size of signage?
I think so, that I was just thinking about that and.
Reasonable restriction on a condition that hopefully the applicant would, would agree with, nothing that's, can't be seen or anything.
Yeah, I think, I wanna talk to Jamie about this too, just to find out what the planning board is able to permit, since it's in a residential zone. So we're gonna have to talk about this, I think.
Yeah. I do think it's appropriate for this board to look at signage and have some reasonable restriction. I love that.
So they're just sort of the usual.
Typically, you got a hundred and twenty square feet.
Is that something you're trying to live with or?
Yeah, we don't have that in twenty square feet. If the planning board for whatever reason says they're limited below that, then we'll, we'll take our chance with the planning board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
But if we, if we set that stipulation now and then they go to the planning board, they would need to then prevent us, correct? If they wanted some stuff.
No, because there's nothing to vary, there's no regulation for signage, you know, residential.
Residential, I agree.
So I think this board, because it's a unique use in a residential zone, we could have reasonable signage and the planning board would probably just agree, would, I would think, unless it's something crazy.
So I would be okay with the use of this property as a professional office building?
I haven't, yeah.
I don't, I don't feel like it needs to be restricted to a financial service necessarily, because it could be a law firm or investment advisor, a CPA. All those types of uses to me are, are a low impact, as opposed like a grocery store, corner store. So a lot of cars will come in and out, and doing cleaners is my cleaner, so I'm in and out of that, arguing all the time. We don't get a lot of more traffic there, but this is the opposite of that. This is, these are appointments, people coming in and out, you know, on an hour basis or, or less, so.
When you say professional, you're not talking about medical use, so about a dentist or?
Medical office would be its own.
That's, I, I guess you're right, thank you for, yeah, clarifying, I, I would think of more along the lines of law office, financial advisors, accountants.
Well, you gotta make a motion, have it as a condition, we could define professional office. It's tough, because there's always something that maybe I'm not thinking of right now that could go in there where we say, oh. This is too intense, but it's hard to project that.
So applicants of financial services business, a lot of about a hundred percent of the space right now.
I know that financial services offices won't ever.
Right.
Have the not, the undesirable impact that we're talking about.
So that's enough.
You can have a busy law firm or a busy other professional office that may not be what's intended for that location. In my opinion, I.
I agree.
Why only?
Well, could it be low, low impact? Do you mind it as like low impact?
Well, it's already somewhat low impact because there's only how many parks?
You get parking spaces.
Any parking spaces?
No, sixteen.
Sixteen parking spaces, so they're not gonna have any use there, that goes to the planning board, that's gonna be more intense than needing sixteen parking spaces.
Yeah, we'll have to comply with.
It's hard to imagine that there would be many businesses that would move in there that would require more than sixteen spaces, so. But yeah, that's up to the board, whoever makes the motion, go through these. I have a list of conditions that, that I shared with the board and I can, I can, um, I can list for the board if you'd like.
I just, I just wanna say, Matt, I'm looking at the code right now about the signs, I'm sorry I didn't think about this earlier. I, under residential signage, the only thing it allows signs for specific uses, um but not anything like this. It's for cemeteries, educational facilities, emergency service facilities, government facilities, religious use, and regulation golf courses. But aside from that, it doesn't look like signage might be allowed in the residential zone. So even if the zoning board puts a restriction on the size, I, I'm not sure if it would be permitted at all. So that's something I just wanna make clear that we'd have to look into and I, it might not be allowed.
Masters Orne, um, I, I was just gonna enter that, that only off, the only signage that's ever been on that building has been on the building. And that was for the American Heart Association and for the United Church of Christ. And um, so that's the only signage that's ever been there.
My, my initial thought was to just say you can have this same size signage that you have on the building now. And no, and no bigger, and, and no lighting, we don't want, I, lights on the sign, which hopefully is not an issue.
And I, I, I agree with that, I think if you include in your resolution the hundred and twenty foot sign, that variance, you'd also be giving us a variance of the same variance to have.
Function as one.
And then to answer that other question, I did look up under your code, your definition of offices, and you're right, it doesn't include the medical. So, you know, if you said offices, it would say a use is limited exclusively to business, non-for-profit, or professional offices. That's your definition, obviously.
For the signs also, for those uses that it is allowed for in the residential zone, it's maximum of fifty square feet or eight percent of a front building facade area, whichever is less. Um, I don't wanna say it's allowed because I'm not sure that it is, but just probably are gonna put a condition on there, I wouldn't go higher than that.
Fifty square feet?
Or eight percent of the town, whichever is less.
Pretty big.
Yeah, five, five feet.
That's big, it's huge.
It's huge, you can see that from the street.
Do you think it's bigger than five feet by ten feet?
No.
If we limited it to fifty square feet, if, if at some point that's a problem that you can't work with? No, we're not reasonable people, we just want to follow the code.
So this five feet, five feet by ten feet, sign on the side of the road.
I think a basketball hoop lane team up there.
My question is about, I understand it's signed, but can there be any sort of lights so that people can see what type of business is being on right there?
You're saying no digital, you're okay with like landscaping lighting upon it?
I'm talking about a lit billboard, aisles, backlit sign, that's not, yes, I'm not, I don't have all the architectural terms, I'm talking about the backlit sign.
Make sure it doesn't say loud, okay.
There was a loud pack sign, I'm not, I'm censoring here, it was bright purple, and I was, I'd say it's just too loud for the neighborhood.
So, you're saying you would want it backwards, we could have like uh landscaping spots on it.
Yes, the lighting would only be related to, to what I'm talking about, the backlit sign, which I don't think you need, you know, anyway.
I, I don't think signage is allowed in the residential zone, other than those uses I named earlier.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I.
That's not allowed in here is.
It's a use variance, and it's not reasonable to give them a use variance and then say you can't have a sign on your property, the side portion would be area variance, wouldn't you?
Well, I don't think you can vary it if it's a prohibition. You could vary it for size or for location or for number of signs, but if it's a prohibited use, then it's not variable through area variance.
I don't know that it's pivoted, I just don't think the code contemplates anything in the residential zone that's not allowed in the zone. So the church and the golf course, those are allowed specific permit uses in the residential zone. The code just doesn't contemplate use variances, I, I don't think.
So, I, I think, I think if you.
But if there's anything that listed.
Experience, we take care of, oh, sorry.
I tend to agree.
I think you take care of the use problem.
I, I tend, I tend to agree.
I'm kinda curious about the lighting of any sign, I think we need to look at what was done before, that neighborhood didn't object to it, we just gotta make sure that there's not you know, light in such a way that it becomes a problem that neighborhood.
No, I think they're saying that, I think they're saying that they're.
Respectful lighting.
Yeah, it's gotta be.
I mentioned the signs would be, right, it's gonna be.
You mean the landscaping lighting?
The landscaping lighting to, to, for the sign, I mean, there's essentially, it's, I hear there's a light.
I can't see it on the floor.
So, so we're talking about.
The signage is allowed this.
Right on it, yes, right, so those are spot. Yeah, so for the time of.
Do I think there's has a sign?
I mean, I'm looking at the sign on there.
Signage is allowed, the, the planning board would be looking at all of that.
Signboard there, it's the spot.
For design.
Oh, a lighting.
I think we'll give them a restriction on it and then we'll figure out, we'll figure it out later. But it doesn't make sense to bring them back to this board, I don't think.
I agree.
Thank you. Okay, any, any other questions, concerns?
As I was saying, there's a lot of.
Any folks from the audience who would like to have a question, comment, anything for the board?
It's not sitting empty anymore. There's already a sign on it, so as long as the new sign isn't any bigger than the sign that's already there, it's not gonna be anymore.
I think the sign is gone.
I try and pass it every day.
Yeah.
So I think we should talk with the lady at least.
Well, if you look at it now, there's, I think it's reasonable that they wouldn't want enough lighting so that people know where.
Right.
I mean, some people probably go to a financial services office after work for meetings, I mean, I don't know.
Are they having meetings after five or six P M, and everybody's dark?
Oh, the client, uh, well, it gets dark very early here.
Because that's getting dark at five, but are, are there, are there meetings getting out at five P M?
That's rare, but yes, it'll be five o'clock, who's out by seven o'clock at the latest, but I'm concerned about the winter months, it's dark by three.
You don't want that. Lights pulling up to what, to a flat building.
I'm looking for a financial services firm, I can't see what.
I wouldn't either, so.
Yeah.
But so are you thinking of like the lights that were already there? Like illuminating this?
I think that's reasonable, I mean, I, I don't know exactly what it.
Lighting, I think that would be looked at during site plan.
Look at this, it's right here, so if you look at the property, wait, what happened to it?
So there, there, there's spots that would get.
You look at the property, the way that it was. Sorry, the sign was here, in there, or here. And there's like a little lip, in, in that lip, it's just two small like garden lights that would, like.
But it doesn't look like a Miami bus, I think that's why we're trying.
It's not a backlit, small garden sign, it's just like, we're here, if you're looking for us, like, it's not safe.
We don't want it to look.
Got it.
Well, everything about it is very pretty, so I mean.
We wanna keep with that, saying it looks, I don't think we would want it.
Right.
And you can restrict it to reasonable lighting for purposes of identification.
That's fine.
And for their safety walking out.
And for safety purposes, you could.
This is what we have in the renderings that we showed you, that there's a, you know, baseball sign that would be spot out of the garden.
And there, so the lighting on this one was linked in there, it's like.
I think it's just all we qualify, that's wonderful.
Should I be reasonably what?
Mean.
This is all stuff that the planning board would look at as part of design review?
Perfect. Yeah, I just wanted to careful on.
Okay.
I think it's a good dot for you to include a use in your resolution though, because otherwise we don't feel the hat on the position.
Right, we're saying use as an office use.
Well, use, to include in your use variance, the ability for us to have a sign, not a standard restriction. And you can limit the size.
Do you want me to add anything then, Tom? Say. Be a reasonable sign, what did you say?
One, one attached building sign up to fifty square feet with a reasonable lighting for the purposes of building identification, safety. I'll read all the conditions I have after this, so, you know, I got them all listed. But the board decides, this is just, this is me, but if any of you know what, just tell me.
And then about the use, how do you do that?
Right now, I have financial services office in the board with just like office use as defined by the town code.
Well, in case it changes, what did, what was the exact?
I think, I think, I can read it.
Just because I think, like.
What was the session? The intent of the financial services use limit was only that if they do change, then the board can look at it again.
Right.
See what's going on.
I'm okay with that, I think that's. See what's going on, it's not meant to restrict them from selling it, it's more meant to.
Have a shot at, who tries to?
Because who knows what could come in that might be busier than we think, you know, there's always exceptions.
Our, our purpose.
A use that is devoted exclusively to business, nonprofit, or professional services.
I think that's fair, because the medical.
Business, business is broad.
The what section is, what's the defined term though, is that?
Office.
Offices?
Offices.
Devoted exclusively to business, nonprofit, or professional services.
Business service, business service, that includes.
A lot of things.
Many things that we can't name, you know, that can't name all right now.
Well, can we say, are we comfortable if we say a use that is devoted exclusively to nonprofit or professional services?
I think it's a good point, we could say financial service or other professional services. Because like a medical office or a urgent care, would not be something I could, would not be something that we want there.
That's not something that we want there.
But I don't know that, I don't think that's an.
Medical office has its own condition.
I don't, I think it's its own thing, can we just say?
Yeah, so as long as medical office is suffering.
A use that is devoted exclusively to nonprofit or professional services, can't we just take out?
Excluding medical.
No, that's its own thing.
Excluding business, excluding business services, which can be.
I agree with Ron, I wanna say.
They want to have their own issue.
I would say financial, nonprofit, or other professional service.
Yes, that limits it enough, is that okay?
I think professional services probably is.
Well, that opens it up to a lot.
Is gonna open it up enough.
Yeah.
The danger of making it too narrow is you're gonna be in the same position twenty years from now.
Not me, no.
Twenty years, yeah, twenty years.
So medical has a separate condition?
Medical office, yeah, I wanna confirm.
Just exclude it.
Well, we don't want just any business there.
Just business office.
The people in that neighborhood.
I said financial services.
That makes sense.
That's, you know. Cause business has become a lot of things right in that area.
I wouldn't be okay with that, or something like that.
Right.
I have financial service office, nonprofit, or other professional service. There.
I think so. Are you okay with that?
I think other professional allows us to.
Sell the lawyers.
Sell the, because then you could get an accountant, a lawyer, real estate, you know.
Lawyers. Root stay, accounts. We'll go with that.
And if you can't make a reasonable return, then you can.
It comes down to the first thing. It comes down to the limited, even if one of those other businesses is wanting to come to the board, it probably run into the same.
No, it's true.
I think, I'm just nervous about business service, could mean many things, and it could be a, you know, business.
It's business offices, but I, I think we're fine.
Yeah.
You could just say nonprofit and professional.
That's what I, that's what I have, I, financial services to specify what they're doing, I have nonprofit or other professional service.
I think that is broad enough to give you room.
All right, here are the conditions I have. One, uses, use, the use permitted is limited to use as a financial service office, nonprofit, or other professional service. Two, I'll take out, this is the tenants or multi-uses. The two, applicant shall not sell a monument sign. Three, one attached building sign up to fifty square feet with reasonable lighting for the purposes of building identification and safety. Four. Building. I don't know, and five, the applicant must complete site plan review with the planning board for change of use, five conditions. Any objections to any of those five?
What was four?
Next shift four.
Where it's for, oh, I missed number, there's only four.
Yeah.
I was adding things as I was speaking, okay. Number one, use is limited to financial service, nonprofit, or other professional service. Two, no monument sign. Three, one attached building sign up to fifty square feet with reasonable lighting for building identification, safety. And four, applicant must complete site plan review with the planning board for change of use. Anything to add, any questions, any concerns with that? And does anyone wanna make that motion? I'll really answer any big motion, what I just said. Want to say it?
Isn't that what we're just trying to?
Make your motion.
Or no?
Make it.
Uh, I make a motion to approve the use variance with following four conditions, the use permitted is limited to a use of a financial services, service office, nonprofit, or other professional service. Two, the applicant shall not install a monument sign. Three, one attached building sign up to fifty square feet with reasonable lighting for the purpose of building identification and safety. And four, the applicant must complete site plan review with the planning board for a change of use.
Any seconds?
Second.
Josh? All right, we gotta go through the criteria here and some motion to approve. So this board has to show that the answer to all of these questions are yes. And I would like there to be some backup on these answers, because either way that you decide here, you may be looking at a challenge. And so this board needs to provide a rational decision based on the substantial record. It's gotta show that all of these answers are yes. If any of these are no, this board has to deny the use there. Understood? Okay, first criteria, that the applicant cannot realize a reasonable return, provided that lack of return is substantial as demonstrated by competent financial evidence.
Yes, based on the appraisal's report, as well as affidavit around industry professionals.
Well, and.
Can't say too much, yeah.
Don't say.
You can't, you cannot say too much, yes.
Let me just get in. But specifically, an appraisal dated four twenty-two, twenty-five was. An appraisal dated four twenty-two, twenty-five was provided by an outside agency which evaluated. The value of the property to include.
Oilers.
The cost. Of. Modifying the present use. To.
The projected cost of renovation to residential.
Correct. Which would.
Would be six hundred. Three hundred thousand.
Rend rent 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 the property virtually none.
The the value would, that was three hundred thousand, you made appraisal.
But the value. What, are you putting the number in? Okay, which would essentially render the property useless, satisfying the criteria one. Thank you for providing.
Or makes them unable to to achieve a reasonable return.
I think, yes. Did you put that we had the affidavits of the listing my last?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would mention the affidavits of Esther Zohar, that person too.
Esther and Jeff Brony.
Yeah.
Even though they're interested, there were still professionals in the industry.
Well, and they're corroborated by the additional financial description.
There's still professionals. And this board feels that there's adequate dollars and cents proof in that, in the record?
Yes.
Also add about the length of time set on.
Was.
Four years.
Two thousand days.
Well, and I would put, and it's this in, this evidence in conjunction with the fact that the property has been listed for four years. When the town's desire to have. A. How to say it?
Productive.
A productive use of this. Building and property to enhance area instead of. Since three one twenty. That's when it was.
Say that again.
Since three. It's been on the property, it's been on the market since three March first, twenty twenty.
We had the prior users also. Offices. Prior use was a residential, so for years it had been used as offices.
Prior use, uh, residential. It had been a religious office. Till that use was abandoned.
And then how probably?
Well, hold on.
I know, I didn't get you. Take it easy.
Sorry.
I'm gonna really talk to you about the property prior to those uses being abandoned.
Well, no, this is the renovation cost is what, the the cost of.
Yeah.
The renovation.
Three hundred thousand for cost of ren- renovation to residential.
Yes, that's what makes it. Of no value.
Productive use of property.
Productive use of the property and enhance.
If they are.
Yes. Prior use was not residential, it had been a religious office. To being abandoned.
So. I, I, that might fit better.
Is I, can I see that, I'm sorry.
Which one?
This, oh, sorry. Just, we'll try to. Yeah.
You're afraid.
No, well, yes, I I have a hard place. We talk about the fact that it had been reduced about the.
Yeah.
The sale price had been reduced multiple times over the period of five years and upon production of the additional. Frazel, there's an explanation. Okay.
Explanation was four at the time of the market.
It's actually multiple different. Was offered with multiple different.
Commercial residential.
Right, yeah.
Right, I'd have.
Evening character.
If they tried to market the property.
To. They're plenty ready by now.
Yeah.
Their person.
There's only more.
I just wanna make this clear.
No, it's important, you you wanna, you wanna back this up in the record, it is important, you never find it until it does, so.
Okay, I think that's unsatisfactory, is that right? That's my move.
Second, that the alleged hardship relating to the property in question is unique and does not apply to a substantial portion of the district or neighborhood.
So you wanna talk about it being across the street, up. Directly. And right off the very boulevard, right?
On a major peninsula separated from other residential properties.
Like.
Largely separated, there is one neighborhood.
Yeah.
There's largely separated from the rest of the neighborhood. Anything else? Well, I guess a substantial portion of the district is residential. Just wouldn't change that at all, right?
Right, right.
I think you're right, Max, you can also say that in the past it was used as.
Well, so I like, I mean.
Office.
The property is unique, this size, structure, configuration of the commercial building are evidence of the property's uniqueness.
Oh, I think.
It's scaled.
Because it's already.
It's scaled.
It's already. And situated next to multiple businesses. Only the side of the street that creates the need for them.
And that I would say the property was originally carved out as an exception property, its purpose was never intended, I don't believe, to be used as a house.
So put that in there. And.
Was never converted from a house to this office, in other words.
Right, because in. The property as it exists is unlike. The other properties in the neighborhood and their board faces its own challenges.
Hold on, look at use.
Yes.
Third, that the requested use variance is granted will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood.
Actually, I think it's going to.
Keep going, keep going.
Because the property has sat vacant for five years. And needs, is in need of repair and rejuvenation and is already. Surrounded by multiple other business properties. So it will enhance the look of the area as it is now and probably draw attention to the other businesses in a positive way.
Maybe I'd say adjacent as opposed to surrounded by.
The chase.
Already adjacent to other businesses, you have no.
It's not truly surrounded, that's.
Surrounded as well.
Little chip bolt ways.
No, I mean, the back side is already.
Right.
I just think it's not, you're actually, no, no.
But I mean, it's not like it's right there.
And see, you're on the corner, you don't even know.
Yeah.
I'll see it.
I mean, an angry boulevard.
Okay, finally, that the alleged hardship has not been self-created.
And we talked about this last time, right, you must see their sound.
Because isn't.
Cause.
Code changed, you got the dates in.
Code changed, right? And the. Church is actually, yeah.
You're all right.
No, we had dates in here that I.
Well, I was gonna read it to you, but.
No, I just need the data, though, yeah, right, December tenth. All right, the applicant has helped greatly here by the fact that they. Sold or purchased the property before the town completely revamped its zoning code on December tenth, two thousand seven. And what was the date of the purchase, two thousand seventy?
January change.
January sixteen, two thousand seventeen.
Thanks.
And the previous zoning law was repealed in its integrity upon the adoption of the new code in two thousand.
Repealed.
Be separate.
Property was purchased by the church?
Yes, the United Church of Christ on January sixteen, two thousand.
Correct.
December tenth.
And on December tenth, two thousand seven, that zoning ordinance of the town of Duette was adopted.
But it's so. Large scale change of zoning shows that. Shows that the applicant didn't purchase this under the current zone.
Yes.
Sure, it wasn't self-created, it happened to them.
If they had purchased it on December eleventh, two thousand seven, it might have been different. After the change, then it could be a different.
Um, Matt, let me to read something we had on. On this one, we also mentioned that. Changes of circumstances can be considered for this criterion claiming that previous use for the building has become obsolete. Before now, so I don't.
Change of circumstances can be.
That was a second. A second, uh.
The avenue of chemistry is if the original purpose of developing.
Right.
Right.
And.
Any COVID argument for self-created, is that part of the deal? Changed anything?
Well, they had to leave.
It ran the use of.
I would say COVID changed the use of the current.
Is it further support to the issue of.
I would say that COVID fundamentally changed.
The market. Yes.
That's pretty good reasoning here, that yes, it's for all four criteria. Sharon, I'll send you my notes.
Yeah.
I've got a motion by Chairperson O'Connor.
Matt, sorry, I don't mean to put a wrench in anything, but I'm talking to Jamie right now and, um. I I don't think you should be putting anything in there about the sign.
How are we gonna identify the building?
Or say that's the maximum sign size if a sign is allowed, something like that. I just, I wouldn't say that. This sign is allowed.
The use variance has.
I can talk to Jamie about it. I don't know how we can say that you can't have a sign.
It's it's.
For allowing it all.
Well, if you say, you know, like if a sign is permitted.
That's accurate, I think if the board is giving that a use variance. For an office.
A maximum, like a maximum size condition.
I have maximum size of fifty fifty square, fifty square feet.
If the planning board determines a sign is appropriate. Or allowed at all.
Well, the experience is making it allowed, right, because it's not allowed without the experience, which is why we want that.
We're gonna have to do some more research on this, but basically.
I'm inclined to say that.
Which is the maximum size, allow, maximum sign size if. The planning board determines a sign is appropriate or allowed by code.
Well, it's not gonna be allowed by code.
Yeah, I don't think that, no.
That's the problem.
Planning board already.
I think the zoning board, the zoning board can speak on signage, they can say what they feel is appropriate for the signage, it's a unique situation, it's not covered by our code. I would think that it would be, it would, it wouldn't make any sense to give a use variance and then say that you can't have a sign. So, I'd I'd like, I'd like to include that in here.
But.
Uh, that if, um.
Well, there was a sign on it before.
What if we say the sign is subject to planning board approval, which the Z D A.
I'm gonna say subject to planning board approval. I can live with subject to planning board approval, I don't wanna say anything about a sign not being allowed.
And I wouldn't say a sign of this side, size would be allowed, I'd say maximum size of.
I've got up, I've got up up to fifty square feet.
Yeah.
Cause if if the planning board would have a smaller one.
Yes. All right, I've got a motion by Chairperson O'Connor to approve the use variance request with the applicant. With the following conditions, number one. The use is permitted is limited to use as a financial services office, nonprofit, or other professional service. Two, the applicant shall not install a monument sign. Number three, one attached building sign up to fifty square feet with reasonable lighting for the purposes of building identification and safety. Subject to planning board approval shall be permitted. Four, the applicant must complete site plan review with the planning board for change of use. I've got a second by Member Warbeck. And I'll call for a vote, Member Truvett.
Yes.
I'm a parent.
Does that happen to you?
No, vote, vote with your heart. Member Dela Poste. Member Warbeck?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cornfield?
Yes.
Chairperson O'Connor?
Yes.
Congratulations, that's five one. It's working with you all. Appreciate your time. Thanks, Tom, thanks for coming back every time, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's not usual for us, so. Really appreciate your dishes.
We appreciate your care.
Do you want this back there? For your file?
Don't make your phone.
I'm just, I was, I just need to show.
It's a problem. It's not, I'm just doing that for years. That's why I don't like going first, because I would have liked to have gone last, because I would have said yes. Your last name starts with P, so it's kind of. Jamie, what are you not for, you, you just said to me last month, you know. I did, you gotta start, no, it was two months ago, actually.
Thank you.
Good to meet you. Good to see you all. Now we have offense, yes, Mammy's Pebble Hill Presbyterian Church.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
That's across the street.
Pebble Hill Presbyterian Church, um, is there anyone here interested in this application from the audience?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If so, I'm gonna read this notice. Notice is hereby given pursuant to section two sixty-seven A of the New York State Town Law. That a public hearing will be held by the zoning appeals of the town of Duette. New York at the town offices, fifty-four hundred Butter Nut Drive, East Syracuse, New York. A Tuesday, April twenty-ninth at six forty-five P M to consider the application of Pebble Hill Presbyterian Church. Received by the Duette Town Clerk on March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Concern concerning the premises situated at five two nine nine Jamesville Road. Tax map parcel ID zero five nine dot dash zero three dash zero eight dot zero. Pebble Hill Presbyterian Church owner in a residential two zoning district. Specific relief requested by the applicant is necessary to install perimeter fence that is eight feet high, whether Duette. Whether Duette Town Code, section one ninety-two dash ninety-five A one allows for maximum fence height. Of six feet in rear side yards and for such additional relief as may be necessary or appropriate. Aided April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Before you get started here, for purposes of seeker, the town is declaring lead agency for the purposes of seeker. This is an unlisted action as an area variance for a church or religious institution. There are no significant environmental impacts associated with this application. The application was referred to the Onondah County Planning Board who have no position on the matter. And applicant, go ahead when you're ready.
Okay.
And if you need me to pull up anything here, I'll do what I can.
I mean, you can pull up the map if you'd like.
Oh.
Community garden, that's where we're looking, right?
Yep. Yes, yeah, so, uh, my name's Courtney Snyder, I'm the pastor of Pebble Hill Presbyterian Church. Um, this community garden space was founded fifty years ago. Um, and it is just in this back corner of our property. Um, the space of the community garden, the perimeter fence, it would be about, um, five hundred and twenty-two. Um, feet in terms of perimeter and the square feet of the garden is, it's a hundred and eighty-five feet by eight, or by seventy-five? Eighty-five. Um. The community garden. Yeah, I'm a pastor there here for the, the past year. I know that the community garden in the past fifty years has had. Has had various shapes and forms of what it has looked like. Our goal is to have something that is far more attractive and looks better. Um, for both us of the church and for our neighbors. Currently, there is like temporary plastic, uh, like a temporary plastic netting, polymer netting that goes around the fence. And it's hard to mow up against, you can't take a weed whacker and like trim the grass down around it. And so part of this is to just um have a, a, a metal, um, you know, coated wire fence. So that it looks better for us and it's better for our neighbors. Um, the community garden consists of members that are both church members as well as gardeners uh from the greater community. Um, and we use the community garden space for events, we use it for events with children, which is also what I'm concerned about brass height we have of.
You say chain link fence?
No, it's it's a woven wire fence, it's not chain.
It's not chain.
It's an open. Wire fence.
What's there right now?
Um, right now, it's like a garden stakes and then like polymer plastic knitting.
No fence right, no real fence right.
There's not real fence, so.
It's like there's no fence.
Yeah, what is it, a wire plus?
Yeah, it's like the, the war now thing. Yeah, it's a plastic net.
Twice around, twice around. Yeah. There's double, it's a double fence.
Flat wire vinyl mesh garden fence eight feet high.
That that's the.
That's that's anyone.
Right now, it's just like plastic knitting.
There are.
There are two.
Plants are?
Yes.
Kind of small versus.
Uh, yeah, right now, there are like two layers of fencing, but it's not a permanent fence, it's garden stakes.
Right, there's, there's.
And so, and this is, this is what we would like. And do you wanna show the other picture of the woven wire fence, what it looks like?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, we can't get this up on screen.
So am I, I wish we, I, I, I wish I could, um.
It's something like this.
Here's a real good, uh, right, what the fence is gonna look like, that's an B foot fence. Um, and you can see, there's a dog on the other side of the fence, but one of the key points of this fence is the visibility through it.
Want transparency.
Gardens, gardeners are inside the fence, they can see what's outside the fence, they can see their cars, okay, things like that. People that are coming in, if someone was walking in with a small child, we should have a little bit of, there's a dog on the side.
These all homes that are right here.
Yes.
It's the, but the back, the back of homes.
All the rest. Yeah.
Right, is there any opposition?
Any opposition from the.
Yes, there's here. Yes, yes.
I will give you, um, an opportunity to speak. Um.
So is the fence just going around?
The fence would just be going around the community garden.
No, that's.
Not, not the perimeter of the property, just the perimeter of our gardens.
And this is in the rear?
It's in the rear, yeah. So thi- this is Jamesville Road.
Parking lot I see on Jamesville.
Um, yeah, this is the parking lot, but it's obviously, this is what's facing the residential. Um.
This is the area variance, there's already a fence there, right?
But it's not eight feet.
No, it's not.
Yeah. Right, yeah, and it's not a per, there's no permanent fence currently.
Not a permanent fence through here.
Correct.
And you can't see that when you drive, I mean, I drive on that road, I can't see that when a road is cracked.
It's that, it's that far away from the road.
Yeah. Great. Road being there, yeah, does it grow into this downings?
Yeah.
Just a very small, right?
Up higher?
Just, just a little.
No, it's, no, it's that's property, that's the top, the back of the church property and the neighbors.
Say it again.
Are there trees there, what's?
Yes. Yeah, there.
There are some trees.
There are some trees.
There's a tree line on the south end of the properties.
Here.
Um, and the, the distance between the tree line and the garden is about fifty feet. And then there's also large, uh, there's a hedge of cedars on one of the other property. And then the, the next property, so, so there's the corner and then the next property, and the other has. Large pine trees, so it's, it, there is a screen already, there's a.
These homes over here.
We have pictures of it, so.
It's on this side.
Uh, these are all to homes.
The backs of homes, okay.
Yeah, backs of homes, yeah, it's all backs of homes here.
Uh, anyway, but one of the important points we'd like to make is that there is a significant deer problem, okay? Um, from the town Duett website, um. Just get back to that one here. Uh, deer, this is from the town Duett website. Deer populations in a natural forested area average about ten, twenty deer per square mile. It's estimated that the populations in Duett are as high as eighty five deer per square mile in some areas. Given our unusually high deer population as well as myriad additional concerns, uh, the town began addressing the issue in the town, actually. I, I don't think it's on the website, but I believe that there's an active deer calling program. Um, okay, um. And then just, what it just, um, I'll just take a minute here, I don't wanna take too much of your time. Um, we have a statement from one gardener. I've been an active gardener at the church for almost two decades, a constant problem has been the deer, which, which every year I've taken the produce out of the garden. Beans growing as high as six feet above ground on decorative, well, pervilla, pervilla have been. We do not wanna lose our crops, but I also would like to keep deer away so we're not exposed to ticks and the problem they bring like wild disease. Um, so, we, we don't think there's any question that there's a serious, um, deer problem. We, we consult, we have, we brought documentation from four, um, authoritative people on this issue. Um, one, there's a book, uh, Cornell Quarantine Extension, the Ministry of Agriculture from Ontario at Cornell University. I'll say that the right sized fence is eight feet. That if the fence is shorter than eight feet, the deer would just gonna go over it. So, the point is, if we're gonna make this expense, we're gonna, we're gonna improve, you know, the, the appearance. We're gonna make this, um, uh, a much better and, and effective garden for people creating a garden, um, it has to work, so.
Um, part of the reason that the current, um, temporary fence is a double fence was to try to ward off the deer, but that obviously makes it. Significantly more difficult to mow around because it is a double fence, so you're then mowing within, in between, like, two, it's a fence and again. Um, because it's currently, uh, just a polymer plastic netting currently, you can't weed law up against it.
Yeah, part of the, the reason that we even began this is because of the appearance with the, the fencing and the weeds, we have a significant. Um, and, uh, problem as well. And so we can't really mow that space either, and we have only a part-time sexton at the church, so resources are limited. So having a, a wired fence then allows us to trim around the entire fence and mow appropriately. So it would obviously reduce a lot of wildlife just coming towards the fence as well as the, the aesthetic appearance of, of the garden. I mean, that's rough how we, we came about, we've done major renovations within the, the garden itself. And we've made it part of our mission, uh, at the church. Uh, we've developed a community, a, a community garden committee that's overseeing the garden. Um, and providing guidance and management of the garden. And we wanna encourage other gardeners to come, and if they can't be successful in, in gardening. Uh, because of deer and wildlife, then we, they're not going to return and nor can we attract other members to the garden. And we view this as a mission within the church. And, um, we provide fresh vegetables for food pantries. Uh, we wanna do children's, uh, programming, we've already established, uh, the children's garden, discovery garden for. Um, learning and, you know, experience, um, you know, just. Things to do in the garden for, and we'll, we built that last summer and we're hoping to run programming for that. And also include other events and activities within the garden and all. So that we can provide a safe and healthy environment, and I, we feel that right now it's not, the gardener that spoke. Basically goes around and every other week and patches up the, the fencing right now. And we just don't have manpower to constantly try to maintain a plastic fence, so a hard wired.
Is the variance from the material?
Yes.
So it's, are we going from four feet to eight or, or six, or sixty eight?
It's, I, I don't think it's.
Six feet, they, they, they can have a two foot variance. They can have a six foot fence without coming here.
Okay.
They, they, they're here for the two foot additional.
Right, and you're saying that the research says it has to be eight feet.
Yeah.
We have some sightings from Cornell Extension, they have sustainability camp, campus.
Are those in our record, or do you wanna submit those to the record? You can submit them after the hearing if you wanna go home and submit them.
I, I have it on my phone.
Yeah, you can email it to us or anything, we can add to the record.
Um.
I would like to make a note about allowed materials for fences from our town code.
Yep.
Uh, permitted materials are limited to wood, stone, other natural material, brick, ornamental metal. Vinyl and black color chain link with the finished side facing adjoining properties.
It sounds like they've.
Will the proposal comply?
Black and.
I'm sure that.
Metal and vinyl.
By.
It's, it's a metal, it's metal with vinyl coating.
I think it means the material, we're really just talking about.
Can you show them?
Alana, are you saying it does meet the materials?
I, I, no, I think we're gonna have to have Derek look at this.
I think. I don't.
Variants is just for the height, I mean, this is. Look at during.
It's woven wire. Minus.
That is the, that is, that is the recommended fencing for.
Sure.
Yeah, so it's highly visible, what are they saying?
Chain link.
Instead of.
Uh, coated chain link. Isn't it the same metal?
Alana, what's, what's wrong with, uh, what's wrong with it? What part of the code? I'm looking in one ninety two ninety five.
I'm not sure, uh, the.
Permitting materials.
That's different than chain link?
Wood, stone, other natural material, brick, ornamental metal, vinyl, and black colored chain link. I was, they're saying it's vinyl.
Vinyl coated. It's vinyl coated metal, so if we are.
Vinyl coated.
Flacking up against it.
It says metal and vinyl.
Well, it says vinyl and black of chain link with the finished side facing adjoining properties. Why, I don't think this applies.
And, and if it's not.
Why?
Because it's not vinyl and it's not black coated chain links. I suspect it has to do with the durability of the fence, it's probably.
Well, it's black vinyl.
I don't know.
I mean, it's, it's, it's traditional garden, it has its.
Yeah, I think, I don't.
I think chain link was the worst.
I know, it's not required to do something ugly, right?
I know, I know what I'm getting from my carpet.
You, you, we're transparent, we're transparent, we don't want something that is like ugly and also like disrupting any of my sites. And our thought was this was more, you can see.
That's right. It, well, from a distance, you almost wouldn't know, is there?
Correct.
I Googled woven wire fencing, that's okay. This one looks like square stuff, does it look like chain link? It's kinda chain link. Uh, it's just not. Yeah, it's, it's square.
It's not not chain link.
I, exactly, that's what I tried to say.
I, I think, I'm not disagreeing necessarily, I think for the application makes sense, I don't think it fits. I suspect that it's due with the durability of the fence.
Maybe, but I also think there's a distinction to be made between it being a fence for the property and a garden fence, like we're not.
Can, right, I don't disagree, yeah, we can vary the material too.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we can also get a variance on the material.
Right, so we might need to add a variant.
To.
Can we do?
Again.
I'm sure that you can vary material, I'm not sure that you can.
I don't think you can vary material.
I don't think so.
Um, and this is something. I don't think Eric's looked at this, you know, we were just looking at the height and didn't.
Do we need to table this until Derek goes and looks at it?
Could we discuss the height?
Yeah. We're gonna give you a chance to, to speak, yes, um, but should we table this? Before vote to?
I mean, I, I don't think that this is necessarily something that could be tabled or could be varied, the materials. I don't believe would be variable.
Well, we want Derek to confirm that either they have the correct materials now or they can make changes to, to get the correct material.
That's right, we're not sure that the materials.
Derek, we're looking at that three building permit. It ha, it would have to come in for a building permit and that would be reviewed by the office at that time.
So that, we have to come back again to talk about that, we're just talking about height.
Not to ZBAs, that would be handled by code enforcement.
Yeah, ours, well, we're just talking about height.
Just talking about height for the variance.
They're only asking for height, this application is only for height. And we're only here to talk about height and to approve height, so we, I don't think that question's before us necessarily on material. That question will be answered later. By our office.
The, the material needs to meet the town code.
We can put that as a condition and the material.
That'll be on to the plant, to the building, to the building.
The, the, the material, if it is approved, would have to be compliant with the code, I think.
Yes.
That the fence materials comply with the code.
And the code enforcement officer will determine that during building permit.
Right. Okay, let's hear from some of the neighbors, um, you can just go one by one and just please address the board with your comments. Um, just please say your name and your address for the reference, Sharon.
My name's Karen Adams Trippeso, I live at two twelve Eden Rock Circles since two thousand and six, I'm the owner and resident in that.
Twelve Eden Rock Circle.
Yep, which my entire backyard.
Can you name it one more time, sorry?
Sure, Karen Adams Trippeso.
Excellent.
And so from my front yard, I have full view of the garden as well as my backyard.
Where's your eyes here?
Let's see. This entire strip right there, okay. So, full view, I got the, fencing, I do have some pine trees in there, in fact, there's one in here, and the shed, and built. Uh, structure shed that matches the house. Nature of the house. And received the letter, which I appreciate your seeing the letter on April seventeenth, because I have no knowledge. As to the interest of having new footprints. And the Pebble Hill Presbyterian Church is a wonderful neighbor and we enjoyed having them as part of the community and things as well. But very concerned when we saw eight foot listed, in that. With the eight feet piece, the main reasoning, as you stated when you read the variance request. Applicant requesting area variance to install eight foot high around the PHPC community garden to deter deer from entering the garden and for such additional relief as may be necessary appropriate. The calling has been very successful, I actually have tulips in the front yard, and you don't have tulips if you have deer, because as soon as you get the first sprout, they're gone. Many of the neighbors have said, we, we aren't seeing deer, a little bit in the winter, but you're not seeing deer now. In the past, we used to have a lot of deer, yes, we had like five or six bedding down and you'd see droppings throughout the yard, highly stress that, but. Deer population has significantly decreased, so the calling obviously is successful in its endeavor to bring down the population of deer. I, you know, on the bottom, it had stated to, you're receiving this notice and. If you know of any neighbor or affected property owner who for any reason has failed to receive a copy, it would be appreciated if you would inform them to this public hearing. And I thought, hmm, did anybody else get this letter? So, I proceeded then to go around to the neighborhood. And hit Eden Rock, Jamesville. Road, which is also a full view. So Jamesville Road. That is down here, full view, and it's questionable if this is considered front yard or side yard. Because the front entrance, this is the main parking lot, the front entrance, the mail is delivered to that front entrance. Across the street is Pebble Hill, Manlis Pebble Hill School, who follows the four foot and six foot piece. When I was interested in finding out. How high a fence can you have? Cause eight feet, that's all the color and ceiling is my home, and I thought, it's pretty high for a fence. And looked at what you had stated for. Height requirements says four feet in height maximum in front yards, six feet in height in rear yards. The garden is not in the rear of the church. So it's questionable, is it in the front or is it side?
I would say side or rear. I don't see how it's front.
Yeah, I already thought we decided it was a two foot variance.
And this one would end at some point here before you get to.
Because it's full view from Jamesville Road, full view, there's no buildings, no houses, no structures. Right in, but I encourage you to drive down Jamesville Road, go up Eden Rock. Eden Rock then is full view from Eden Rock. Eden Rock here, and especially then when you get into Ardsley. Both sides of the street on Ardsley have full views of the garden.
Ardsley being right here.
Correct, both sides of the street have full views, in between, the house is set to the side, and then they have full view. From across the street of Ardsley as well as the side that is adjacent right next to the garden. Then I have two twelve Eden Rock Circles myself, Karen Adams. Uh, Jay Lee, two eleven Ardsley, Palio Menendez, two oh six Ardsley. Joshua Paleshi, two ten Ardsley, Jack Knightman, two twelve Ardsley, Alexa Eastock, two fourteen Ardsley. Aaron Malley, two ten Eden Rock Circle. Ellen Bosch, five two seven five Jamesville Road, Annie Gleason, five two seven one Jamesville Road. Charlie Patel, five two zero three Jamesville Road, Carolyn Garner, two thirteen Ardsley Drive. Sam Scopolinis, two eighteen Eden Rock Circle. Jos, uh, Josephine Moranti, two oh five Eden Rock. Brianna and Joe Laramie, two oh three Eden Rock Circle. All fourteen of those people have full, complete views of the garden, this is very much residential area.
They don't view it as.
No, what? No, what I, what I've written, uh, eight foot fence around Pebble Hill Presbyterian Community.
You receive the notices though, correct? People receive the notices. Okay.
And they said, I'm saying, I'm acting to some, we have some certainly families that we have residential members, neighborhood members here as well. And, you know, if on around some people were not able to make it, so I'm acting, certainly acting as agent or others.
You're okay with the six foot fence, but not the eight foot?
Correct. Because saying, what we have stated, we, the undersigned, do not want an area variance to install a fence that is eight feet high around Pebble Hill.
Same guy, this is a copy.
Yes, I just copy. I just made a copy for you.
Thank you.
Yep. Community garden, Jamesville Road, Tex, Matt Parcel, ID fifty-nine threes oh eight zero.
Is it because it would be ugly?
Eight foot is higher than your ceiling. The issue that they have groundhog. Groundhogs, there, I can attribute, there are many holes throughout. Groundhog is a huge, that'd be nice about calling groundhogs. Hog will decimate the garden and they do. We watch them every year. They burrow right underneath and they burrow deep. They will.
But it could be the six foot eight foot fence. What's the difference?
To, yes, and the purpose, the groundhog's what's gonna decimate the garden and the groundhog can dig under any size plate fence.
Right, but it's, what, what the neighbor sees is just gonna be ugly, right?
Yes, and it doesn't, it certainly, I contacted the minister to assure him, the purpose was to make it, it's a legal fence, make it look pretty, have various entrances, accommodating for people to have various entrances available. But what we were stating, all the people, every single person I spoke with was more than willing to sign at least our statements, all of the residential houses, churches, which, um, Lincoln Church up on Woodchuck, um, off of Woodchuck Hill, does not have an eight foot fence around their, our, their community garden. They have schools, Pebble Hill, Manly's Pebble Hill School directly across the street, has four foot, six foot respectively. Nobody has eight foot fence across the street from me. There's community, they have their own personal garden. They have a six, six foot fence. Everybody else has six foot fences and is certainly able to comply and grow their gardens. And my own husband had, and I, and some of the others, neighbors have been involved with the church garden in the past as well. We were able to grow produce and personally farmers, I've yet to see a farm, we go down Pebble Hill, I was going to Girl Scout camp this weekend. Lots of farms down in that area don't see a single fence at all. So and they're growing produce because we're all eating. So the community neighborhood, we're not opposed to the church having fence. Certainly, they can have any type of fence they would like. We're not opposed to fence. Their choice, what type of fence they like. Our issue is the eight feet, because it's gonna be very noticeable from all angles going through. And the fact that, um, one was, the other people have had six foot fences and they've come to town, that's where their piece, they have a fence put in, it's six feet in height. Way to go. So nobody's having great foot. Construction sites do not have eight foot fences and they have dangerous materials in the building construction. They don't have eight foot and that's for safety. So why needing an eight foot fence in a residential, this is very residential. This isn't like that past proposal mentioned earlier where it's very boulevard and not new school residences. These are very much residents that live here twelve months of the year. Community garden is wonderful and it's a nice piece. There are about three children that attend the church regularly. So it'd be great to have three children be involved with, you know, activities and things. That'd be wonderful. But the fact, two extra feet, that's significant, no matter what type of fence it is. And the fact that groundhogs is still predominant issue that nobody's addressed. The other neighbor, uh, who could not make it, she asked, she had a letter written. She wrote a letter and she asked me to share her letter.
She wanted that submitted to the record, copy.
Sure, that's what I did. Yep, and her picture from her view.
I'll let you write the letter.
Sure, thank you. Sorry.
It's her house?
Yes, this is the view from her, uh, yard.
Oh, and that's the community there.
Yes, and it's, you know, pretty extensive as they had stated size, but it covers quite a few houses going through. But she states, this is, uh, Shawn and Carolyn Garner, we reside at two thirteen Ardsley Drive and our backyard shares the property line with Pebble Hill Presbyterian Church, specifically the garden area. We enjoy gardening ourselves, have even purchased a plot to garden for a few seasons, ten years ago at the church. We continue to garden in our home with various plotted, how to plants, et cetera. We support the initiatives of the garden committee and their premise of giving food to local food banks and those in need. However, we remain steadfast in our belief that the various requests for us to cut down and cut back trees of ours back because of lack of sun, gardening and issues for pH levels in the soil for gardening purposes is extreme. We have had tree companies inform us that cutting back too much unhealthy trees can actually cause disease and stress. We would obviously support requests if there was potential structural damage to the church or building, but don't feel there's enough evidence to support these requests. While we are all forced in beautification of the gardening area, we are opposed to requests for eight foot fence, which we feel is not only intrusive but unnecessary, especially for the sake of keeping deer up. The deer have been drastically reduced in our area over the last year or more due to the calling. And while deer can be annoying to various plants, shrubs, the bigger problem are squirrels, chipmunks, rabbits and woodchucks. These animals will find their way into gardens by several means and an eight foot fence will not prohibit their entry. We are shocked our neighbors and consider the church to be a good respectful woman return. However, we feel there has been a lot of requests, complaints, concerns for something that is utilized five to month, five, stupid, four to five months of the year. We are left looking at this area on a daily basis for twelve months out of the year, which can often begin unkept eyesore. We would very much like to see the area cleaned up, but feel if there is going to be a fence installed, that a four foot fence, considering it's the front of the church, would be sufficient. These are the same guidelines we had to adhere, we had to adhere to when seeking permit for our own fence with the town of Wicke roughly two years ago, respectfully. Shawn and Carolyn Garner, two thirteen Ardsley Drive.
Picture, uh, yeah, right.
Yep, that was from.
Their yard.
But isn't it a six foot fence? Like, they could have a six foot fence.
You've determined.
Six foot fence, we're fine.
Well, that was a street there. If, if, it's not a corner lot, so unless it's a corner lot, you're not gonna have multiple front yards.
Yeah.
If, if that was a street there on the left, you would have a front yard. But because.
Just like the borders on Annesley, that's not a yard that faces or their neighbors, it doesn't make it a front yard.
Right, because there's nothing, the church itself is not blocking the garden.
Doesn't, that's not.
Okay. Okay, so either, then we'd still be fine with, we're still fine with saying six foot. Our main issue is still eight foot. Five, do you need an eight foot fence in a very, very residential area where people live there twelve months of the year? The garden is lovely. They have three months of the year. The people come, the people go. They don't even live in the neighborhood. One person lives in the actual neighborhood. The other people, some live in Syracuse, some live in other areas. They don't even live in view of the garden. And so, you know, yes, the administrator assured us it was gonna look pretty and things, which that's great. We're fine to have a pretty looking fence at six feet. Fine, have a pretty looking fence, as many entrances as you would like, you know. But an eight foot fence, some of the quotes that the neighbors had stated, geez, that's excessive or that's, you know, been overboard or we build a jail, there are quite a few comments.
Would you be open to some screenings in front of the fence?
Well, church had already come over to one neighbor and asking them to take down a tree and the tree is.
Speak to them.
Screening, it doesn't look, they're certain. The, the tree was, um, part of their screening and that's what she's referring to, that they were asking that the tree get taken down.
Okay, do you have something to say? Yeah, I actually, because we, we, we wanna be good neighbors, I actually, was something we discussed and just a little backstory. So they do have a black walnut tree. And they had already put up a fence and, and you can see in the pictures, they had, um, just recently planted a whole row on the outside of their six foot fence, uh, cedars, which are already exceeded the six foot fence, which will obviously continue to grow. I, as a, as a part of this, I approached, I knocked on the door and I just simply asked if they were, I said, would you be very interested in taking down the tree we would cause share? And they said, no. We love the tree, it blocks, you know, our view of the parking lot and the lights and such. And I said, fine, we don't wanna do anything, uh, to uh, be a deterrent to, to your aesthetic look. So I, but I said, is there a possibility that we could potentially cut a little bit of the canopy that's extending way over into the, into the garden, which would be appropriate to do? And I, we still said, um, we would only do what you were comfortable with and we had the tree service guy show up and we, and I met with the tree, the homeowner and, and we agreed that we would do nothing to damage the tree. We were only looking to scale back the, the canopy of the tree just to give, um, because you can't grow a lot of things under a black walnut. Between the, the root system, it's a Jell-O, uh, the toxic chemical to many different types of plants and vegetables. So it's very limiting. So that whole space in front of there, we can't really do any, any planting. Um, so that, we did not say, we, we were coming to take the tree down. I went to their home. I went in their home, I visited with them and it was a very mutual, agreeable co- um, conversation. And then again, we had the tree service come, because they were taking more trees down in our, at, on the property and we met with them and we haven't done anything because we haven't done anything. And I even thought like, let's wait until the tree leaves out, leaves out, so that we can really assess, you know, so we don't take anything more that would be prohibitive for, for the, for that neighbor. So, yeah, so the other piece is that I think we were a little confused because we, we probably should have not done the worst. But, you know, we, we weren't sure that we were supposed to provide a list of who's the surrounding neighbors with three hundred feet and view of the garden and then, uh, the, the town will send out the letters and stuff. But I think we just, that was a missed opportunity on our part. But I'm certain if you're going around to neighbors asking, do you wanna have a fence? And nobody's saying, gonna say, yeah, let's get a fence.
Well, they're fine with a six foot fence. Everybody was fine with a six foot fence.
But if.
They were fine with. It's like the opportunity to talk to the neighbors and we could table this and you could try and work it out and get some, some support and find out if there's where the opposition is and if there's something you can.
Because you may be able to talk to those who signed the petition and explain what's going on and just to give them two sides.
Because you may. And it's, you know. So are, so what you're saying is because of the petition, we wouldn't be tabling?
No, it would get, we, one of the main obstacles for our board is when there's neighborhood opposition like this. And.
I'm just trying to be, I'm just.
And our board tries to take into consideration what the neighbors are saying and then still give the minimum relief that you need, um.
Well, and you're saying, I feel like it could be a missed opportunity that you.
This may also be.
From where I stand, I think that that would be great because like, again, from where I stand, right, uh, I recognize that there's a lot of history with this garden. There's a lot of history between the garden and the neighbors. And I am privy to some of that and not all of that. My goal as the pastor is to have this be something that enriches the community and also is pretty, right? Like, that's, that's, that's my goal.
It's gonna be pretty, that's higher than your ceiling. Eight foot isn't your bedroom. You don't have eight foot fences in your bedroom.
Well, like, that's where the board has to bet each other.
That's up, that's up to the board to, to decide, but.
I mean, this is the tree line, this is the tree line between the garden and her property, which you did take shrub trees. So you, so there's an entire tree line.
I would submit all these as pictures and I would also submit the information about deer that you're suggesting.
Yeah, this.
I think.
And it's fifty feet from the garden just to the tree line and then probably what, fifty, a hundred feet to the house? So it's not like we're right on top of that, um, neighbor.
I would say.
We have, we have other neighbors, so it's.
No, we, we'll give everyone an opportunity. We'll give you, we'll give you all.
I just wanted to be clear about, you know, that, that when you had mentioned screening, there is existing and obviously would, would be.
You can make that part of your application. You can go back, you can speak with the neighbors, you can submit the deer evidence. She's saying there's not deer, Karen's saying there's not deer. You're saying there are deer. Submit, submit the literature that you're.
And someone's saying six foot's good enough. Some people say eight foot's gonna, our, our first factor is balancing test of whether, whether it's near. So if we have any evidence before us, I just.
Well, the issue of, of what the issue.
People are, there are a number of sources online saying that people have given.
But the issue before the board is probably the height. It's not the problem because, so like, I, I get, I totally appreciate that, but the only thing that's before us is the height and it's not.
Do they need that height to keep deer out? Or is there a deer problem that they need to keep out? You're saying no, they may be saying yes. So the board has to evaluate it all and.
Right.
Or would that height have an adverse effect on neighbors? So.
Right.
Not necessarily one of.
How about this? Let's hear it from the other neighbors and then we can decide what to do here.
Yes.
Can you please just say your name and address for the record?
My name is Young Lee. My husband, Jay Lee. We live in two eleven Ardsley Drive.
Two eleven Ardsley.
When you do, those are three, in the middle one is ours.
This is you right here?
Yeah.
Okay.
We, uh, we've been living there since eighty-six and I started the gardening in at Pebble Hill Garden, so I know the history all of. So that time it was full occupied, so it was beautiful. And I learned gardening from there, okay? So right now I have a, on my own, uh, garden in my property. The reason was, uh, my property, own garden. That time, no, oh, we did, the church did all plowing in, uh, yes, I mean, the spring, even, even in the fall, they cleaned up. And then, uh, I paid one lot, cash lot for the twenty dollars that time because of the debt. And then sometime, I don't know when, uh, so that, that time I wanted to keep my, uh, perennial. I didn't want to have a, you know, the plow or the tilt, my perennial, that's what I have, that's when I started on my own, in, inside of my own property. And lately, I think it's been more than ten years, fifteen years, I don't know. Uh, they did not tilt, tilt?
Yeah, tilt the ground.
Tilt, whole garden, they didn't do. So everybody was just a kid and they did their own digging or whatever. And since then, uh, it wasn't occupied, no, not whole plot was, uh, ten. So, no, so looked very ugly sometimes because a lot of, um, the, what is it? Garbage is one corner and old weeds, one corner and all those things. So one of my, my own, uh, personal suggestions, why don't you just to cut little, short little, uh, the, less deep? So the, 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 all, all plot, all the, the space will be occupied or ten, the. And then that, um, the tree's shade will have less impact, okay? And it's, huh, maybe I can, I can go there. Anyway, and then another one, eight feet, I, I, uh, the, started to eight feet fence, uh, recommended when it's wide open area. Okay, so lots of the deer's in, from far away, they have to jump, okay, when it's eight feet, actually seven. So they said eight, eight will be, eight feet will be, uh, safe. But that's not wide open area. It's a residential area and some trees here and there. Deer is not gonna, the, run really from far to the, the, what? The jump to over seven feet. So eight feet, six feet, eight feet, they are, uh, I mean, Cornell or whoever, and even in the, uh, the, on the internet, they recommend for the entire, uh, I, I mean, not even, not even one deer will go over. That's what, when it's eight feet, you need it. But right now we don't have that many, uh, deer. I've been having deer on, under my, uh, the trees and the backyard, again, dripping, droppings and everything. But yes, last year I did a CNE and I was afraid of the kick, so I tried to, the, do something to, uh, stop deer coming to my property. But I didn't see any past year or this year. So, um, again, the eight feet is not necessary. That's why.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, that's compatible to me. I mean, six feet, nothing before this says six feet is not gonna, maybe you can see something that says it will be actually two feet. Six feet is further than, it's a huge fence. Eight feet is more, just, just, break us something that says you need two more feet.
Yes, we did, we did have that doc- documented, just as a, no, and again, we wanna, we wanna be friendly to neighbors. I'm just trying to, you know, that a deer from a standing position can jump a six foot fence.
How many deers have you seen in the neighborhood?
But I just.
Left, they submit that to the record.
Yes.
I'll say submit whatever researcher and findings you have.
So, you know, when you have a stock gate fence, deer are, um, afraid of predators, obviously. So if you have like a stock, uh, stock gate fence, they won't jump over a six foot fence because they don't know what's on the other side. But we would have an open fence, so they can see exactly what's in the garden and, you know, if there's any predators. So they don't need a warning start to jump a, a six foot fence. An eight foot fence, which is, which we have documented, is the recommended height. Or, or, um, to deter deer. There's no guarantee in anything in life, right? I mean, if a deer is determined and they wanna take the chance of. I mean, if a deer is determined and they wanna take the chance of jumping over and make it, they, they might, but that's the recommended height and that's why we had, that's why we were here to, to see it.
We can certainly submit that, but can, can I raise one issue, um, I'm worried about this material issue, which I was not before tonight.
Yeah, I remain very concerned about the material issue too.
Yeah.
And although we were.
That's something you could work out in the meantime as well, speak to our code enforcement officer, he's very good, he'll be able to tell you everything you need to know.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah.
His name's Derek White, if you wanna speak with him.
I mean, this, this woven wire fence is pretty much a standard item, I mean, it's sold by the thousands of feet, I mean, it's a big item.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
That's not, that's not.
The code was written long ago.
I'm sure the chain, a chain link fence is at least twice the cost.
You know, and well, and I think that's, that's exactly the point and that's what I was trying to convey earlier is that there is a significant difference between the type of fence that you intend to install and a chain link fence. Everybody's climbed a chain link fence to get to a soccer field, right? It's, it's of a certain, it's typically in a concrete footing, it's typically with a, with a, you know, hollow metal post.
Right.
I think your plan does call for this, but you often see welded, you, wire fences with like a T post that you hammer in.
It looks like barbed wire.
And the thing that I'm concerned about into a lot, you know, a lot of point at the beginning is, I don't think that when the code talks about fences, they're talking about to be around the garden, right? They're talking about a perimeter fence, you know, to divide two, like, so to me, it's almost as if if they're, if they're all, yeah, sure, we're here to review six feet versus eight feet, right, yes. But I think it warrants, you know, it's entirely separate discussion, I don't know, does this, if it's code enforcement question, I don't, does this go to the planning board?
Yes, we would have.
It would, if we get.
If we get, if we still have.
It's residential. It will not go to the planning board, it would get a building permit.
Yeah.
Because it's a residential.
My, my, my point is that the thing that we're talking about is not the type of fence the code, the, the code.
Is there restrictions on garden fences they are aware of, you think?
Not really. I don't.
He's saying it doesn't fit the definition.
Yeah, right, right.
Right, my perspective is from the perspective of this code, this fence that they're doing is hardly different than the one that they don't, not supposed to have right now anyway.
That's a good point.
In terms of its long term durability, right?
Is it even?
Have unlimited height?
Right, does it even, do they even need to have a variance?
Well, that's my question, I'm not even arguing for or against, I'm just stating, I think that we're almost talking about two entirely different things.
Two completely different things. I kind of got.
Right.
Yeah. I said we go with seven feet.
Sorry, I forgot one more thing, the, yes, uh, deer. But I'm right there, I see all the time and they lose, I mean, the gardeners lose more the crops to the rabbits and groundhouse than to deer. Because I see all the time, well, I think.
Yeah, so.
Right, so like, right, so like, part of this, right, is we don't need a variance per mitigation methods for groundhogs and rabbits. The plan, you know, expense is that it would be buried in the ground, which would help deter rabbits. Uh, but like that, we don't need a variance for that.
That's not, that's not the issue.
That's not the issue here.
I mean, the issue for the board is, I mean, you have a case there, you have hardship that you need an eight foot fence. The board, I think, is willing to give you time to, to supplement your application, speak with the neighbors about their concerns, maybe find a compromise, maybe not, you don't know how that's gonna go, um.
That's pretty strong.
And submit, submit from your, submit from your perspective, how, why you feel that deer in that area are gonna be impacting your garden and that you need an eight foot fence. Add that to the record.
Could I speak? People in the audience.
Anyone can speak, Rick, you can absolutely speak.
Uh, Big Bosch, fifty-two seventy-five Jamesville Road. My property runs down the edge of the parking lot.
Fifty-two seventy-five?
Fifty-seven five.
Thank you.
And we're out in the backyard all the time. I am actually representing my wife, she signed the, um, letter, but she had no idea what the fence is gonna look like, it's all here, it was eight feet. So in fairness, you know, I don't really have, you know, a horse in this race, I don't garden there, but I do look at it. The difference between six and eight of, of a light wire fence to me is nothing, if they think they need eight, I say, they can. Because people want to garden.
It sounds to me like, and I'm just.
I bet most of those people didn't know.
I know, and she was saying that she, that Pastor Courtney has stated.
Not opposed to each other, you're.
One at a time, guys, one at a time.
No, Karen didn't know, anyway, that's all I can speak for, she didn't know this question.
Okay.
That's all.
Do you have a chance? Yes. Carolyn Wilson, two oh eight Eden Rock Circle. So, from my backyard.
Carolyn.
Wilson.
L I N E.
L I N E. Two oh eight Eden Rock? Yes.
So where are you in there?
Yeah. Uh, I'm two houses this way, I'm Eden Rock.
Okay.
She's to the left.
See it?
Yes, from my backyard, I can fully see it, my back, yes.
What's your, what's the number?
Two oh eight, thank you. Um, exactly what was just said here, when I got that letter and I, and I heard eight foot fence, I was like, ooh, I don't like that. And then when I went online and looked at these pictures and, and I Googled, what is a wire mesh fence, I'm like, that's invisible.
Right.
I don't care how high they make that, I would have a bigger problem with them putting a six foot stop gate fence. The fence between my house and my neighbor on the other side, they used to have a pool, it was six foot stop gate fence. It is ugly, it's falling over, it's theirs, it's awful. Like, they're allowed to put that up and it would be so ugly from the street, from all the neighbors. So, I'm not supposed to address that. If the church would like to revisit the neighbors with accurate pictures, I think a lot of the neighbors would have a different opinion and again, the issue was raised, do they even need a variance for a garden fence, not a perimeter fence? Um, so that may.
I think yes.
Yeah, so, but.
I think yes.
Yeah.
I think.
I know that the material isn't such a word for it, it's the height, um, but the material is a, is a huge.
It matters to the neighborhood, yes, I don't want an eight foot stop gate fence, that's ugly.
Right. Want an eight foot of this invisible material?
It's possible that the code enforcement officer says that the proposed material is not.
It might be more like a chain link.
That's possible.
But the H A link is not as attractive either and I don't know when the code was written versus when this material.
I agree with that, right.
None of us wrote that code, but we just have to follow it.
I know. Uh, can they go and get a, can they.
Let's research that question.
Yes, this.
Perhaps the code may be.
Tableting it would give a code.
Everybody, yeah.
I would speak with Derek White, code enforcement.
They can get you his contact.
He is very good, I'll give you his current information and speak with him or I'll have him reach out to you guys and talk about this.
Is there anyone else who wants to?
An opportunity to speak?
I was just purely concerned about whether you could see through it.
I think.
If it was gonna be a solid wood fence, the backside of that. Would, would.
Could I have your name, please?
Tim Coley, at two oh seven Arts League Drive. Which is right directly behind the church.
I mean, I think, you know, and I'm just speaking for myself, but it seems like your mission is in community, obviously, in the nature of the work that you are in. It sounds like maybe it would be a good idea to get
Absolutely.
On the same page, so you feel good about it and they feel good about it, maybe supplement your application with that additional feedback or information about the gardener, about code enforcement and the neighborhood's community share in that and then.
If the neighbors wanna submit anything, you're, you're welcome to submit something to, to the record as well, we'll add, we'll add that. We have your attachments already added to our record.
I think once.
And.
I, because I think once all of that's in the record, we can either
make a decision on it or find a compromise that everyone can live with. But right now it just.
Yeah. Question for the purpose of this garden, this garden, you know, I actually belong to this church and love going to this church, but the purpose of this garden, obvious, they enjoy growing garden, they're not selling as produce, you know, they're growing vegetables and items in these for family, friends, et cetera. This isn't something that's, you know, creates farms or some major farming where it's bringing in income and that's, we think this is a hobby. Like, they don't, perhaps in their backyards, they can't have a garden in their backyard, so they're able to pay for a plot to be able to use and to enjoy the garden and use the water at the church to water their gardens and things, this is recreational enjoyment piece for community to use, which is a wonderful piece. Nobody of the neighbors was opposed to the garden, nobody's opposed to having a fence that from what Courtney had said in email to me that they had not had plans yet at the time, so I guess they got plans, we can just.
Well, no, we still do not have a vendor, right? Step one was this conversation about a variance and from the beginning, my main priority has always been to have something that looks pretty that the neighbors are amenable to.
And so.
Whereas my priority is to have work, okay?
Right.
And there's not, and to, and to my, to my point of view, what is the point of putting a fence that doesn't solve the problem? Okay, and, and I'm sorry, I, I, we're, we're especially gonna disagree here, there is definitely a deer problem in the garden. Okay, we're just gonna have to disagree on that issue, who knows, okay?
Well, I think, I do, yeah.
We don't wanna get into such issues, we just, we just want enough information so the board can make a decision.
I think.
Right.
So it seems like that, that can happen in the next month or so and if the board wants to make a motion to table this, then we can all go home, figure out what we're gonna do and then come back next month and, and discuss this.
A question, a question. Did you know there was opposition to the fence before tonight?
Um, I had, had exchanged emails with Karen, um, and I had sent in my last email that like my priority was to have this be like aesthetically appealing and I want the neighbors to be on board.
But you weren't aware of, it's like the number of people who are not positioned.
They said they would know they could do that.
Well, I, my point though is just that I feel like, you know, a lot of this.
And no other neighbors reach out to the church directly, uh, whether to meet or even just calling the church office.
We did get a support letter from, from Malleys Pebble Hill School.
Well, you should include that in your application.
Submit that.
Also plow the drive and they have community relation because they plow the drive, they park in that parking lot, so.
I'm just, I'm, I'm just.
I mean, I just, it sounds like there's something that can be potentially worked out, but minimally, it sounds like there's a community discussion that could probably get everyone maybe in a better place for us to help you make a decision or we can.
And we can figure out the material issue, speak with the code officer, I mean.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, and the other thing that's come up is, is this whole concept of it's a garden fence, it's not a quarter of both fence within the code, I mean.
Oh, it's a fence.
No, I think.
I think we opened the door.
Yeah.
No, you guys are a bunch of.
It's a fun, it's a fun exercise, but I don't think so.
It's not a.
I, I was actually trying to steer the other direction, is rather than saying that I don't think it's required, I would say that they would almost require a variance for everyone.
Any style, any of them.
Not just the height, the materials would require and there are other situations like the, the finish on the top. You know, I don't, I don't, I would assume that whoever installed the fence would do such in a way that, you know, you have a, it's cut at the top. But one of the, one of the requirements is that it not have any, you know, jagged edge that potentially hurt somebody, like, there are other things that I think would need to be considered.
I think you guys can take a look at that, I think for tonight, we're in agreement that we should make a motion to be able to, uh, fans.
Any second?
I'll, I'll.
Seconded by Jamie, motion to table from Kelly, seconded by Jamie.
I think I.
All in favor? All in abstain, motion carried.
Thank you all.
If you need another, if you need more time, just let us know, let, let us know when you wanna commit.
Will you be sending out a letter letting all those people that you sent level to before, will you be sending a letter when the next meeting?
We typically do not ta, I noticed the table reading, but you're asking me, right?
So we.
They could do those people.
It's not like.
But each of those, so say each of the people that you mailed letters, could you re-mail a letter of when the next meeting will be in regards to this, that would be very beneficial, but
I'm.
People will all receive the letters and.
I'm happy to do that.
I think.
So we were, send that, like, we had the whole slideshow.
Send that to us, give us a thumb drive, we'll put it all up and everything will be in the record.
Just, yeah.
Give it to Sharon here, the secretary.
Hey, Matt.
Thank you very much. Your response is without. All right, well.